I'd like to call the meeting to order of March 5, 2020. And if you will all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the little which is in, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present except for Councilmember Conway.
Thank you. That moves us to adoption of the agenda. I would like to add to close in memory of Jeff Perotti and of Kenny Allen. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Can I get a motion to move?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brings us to consent calendar, excuse me, oral communications, number one. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Was that a wave?
No, it was a wave at me.
Oh, okay. I have no slips, so we will move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the items B through E?
I make a motion to approve items B through E on the consent calendar.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Which one of you?
He can have it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor, there's also a presentation for us, a brief presentation for the Census Day.
Oh. Well, then, we will do the presentation for Census Day, April 1, 2020.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Irene Bryant, I'm with the 2020 Census Bureau. I want to give you a little information on what's going on and what to expect. The Census was established by George Washington in 1790. It basically determines the number of representatives in Congress. Since then, the Census has been happening every 10 years. The U.S. Constitution requires that electoral districts be periodically adjusted to account for population shifts. Independent bipartisan commissions handle the redrawing of congressional district lines based on the Census. In 1902, the Census became a permanent agency. In 2010, the questionnaire was shortened to 10 questions. By April 1, everyone will receive an invitation to respond to the Census. There will be three ways to respond: online, by phone, or by mail. This is the first time you will have the option to respond online. You can even respond on your mobile device. The Constitution requires you to complete the Census. The results are critically important because once in a decade, the Census helps businesses, researchers, communities to make decisions, like if your community needs a fire department, more funding for schools, new roads, public parks, health clinics, et cetera. At last count, we had close to 309 million people, and there are $675 billion available in federal funding each year to be distributed to communities based on the Census. For every person that is not counted, your community loses $1,200 per person per year. If you multiply that by 10 years, which is when the next Census would occur, that is $120,000 your community loses per person per year. This is an opportunity for you to get involved and help shape the future of your community. We need your help to raise awareness of the importance of an accurate count. Use social media or any other way you're comfortable with to spread the word. Don't let misinformation keep your friends and family from responding. If you hear misinformation, check rumors at the website rumor@census.gov. Currently, my job is to enlist people to sign up and work for the Census as well as disseminate information. There are part-time, temporary jobs that are good choices for retirees, students, someone in between jobs, or just someone that would like to make some extra money. The Census taker position pays $30 an hour. It's paid weekly. You get paid training and paid transportation. It's very flexible. You can work whatever days, whatever hours you want. You can set your own schedule, work as many hours as you want, as long as you don't work more than 40 hours per week. You must apply online, be 18 years old at least, pass a background check, have a valid Social Security number, and have an email address. I've left some flyers that gives you the website that you need to apply to. Don't wait because we're at the end of our hiring period. Help your community because there is not much time left. The Census will actually start on the 1st of April. What the job for the Census taker is, basically, they mail a list of addresses to, I'm sorry, they give a list of addresses to the Census taker. And the Census taker goes to those addresses of the people that have not responded to the Census. If the Census taker is not comfortable going to a certain address, they can tell them that they don't want to go there, and they'll send someone else, and they'll give them a different address to go to. Basically, that's what it is. So you realize how important it is that we do count everybody. Again, the Census is going out mid-March or end of March, and you need to respond by mid-April. If you haven't responded, they'll send you a postcard or an email. And if you still don't respond, then there'll be a Census taker coming to your door and asking you to please respond to the Census. So if you don't want anybody coming to your door, respond to the Census as soon as possible. Thank you. Any questions?
Of course.
So if people in our community are interested in working for the Census Bureau, where would they be working from?
So basically, they'll be given a list of addresses. They'll be working in their own community, in their own neighborhood. You're not going to be sent to San Jose or San Francisco. You're going to stay within your own neighborhood.
So, but do they have an office they have to go to first?
They'll go to an office for training.
And that's in San Mateo County?
Yes. They are arranging to have some offices in this area for training purposes. Our current office for San Mateo County is in Redwood City.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, thank you for doing this work. So you said that the Census is going to go out April 1. What's the...
It actually goes, the questionnaire goes out before April 1.
Before, okay.
So they want you to respond by April 1, no later than the middle of April.
Okay. And then, when does the Census stop?
It's probably going to continue all the way to end of July until we gather all the information that we need. At some point, they're going to have to stop.
Sure.
It all depends on the response.
Okay, all right.
So the jobs are going to be basically eight to 10 weeks, and they'll probably be extended beyond that.
Okay. And from what I can gather from Council Cunningham's questions, it sounds like you work out of your house, basically, and then you go to wherever you're assigned.
Yeah, they give you a list of addresses. You may have to occasionally report to the office. There is a field supervisor that you'll be working with, and they'll give you more specific instructions. So, yes, you can basically work from your house.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Sure. Anything else?
One thing I just wanted to point out is that all the census data that's gathered is kept confidential.
Absolutely.
And so people shouldn't be fearful of responding to the Census for privacy issues. Is that correct?
Correct. And if there's any questions on there they're not comfortably answering, they don't have to.
Great. Sounds like it's really important that we get all our citizens to respond.
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that brings us to public hearings, to item F, designating the Central Brisbane Underground Utility District. Staff report.
Yes, ma'am. Honorable Mayor, mayor, pro temp, council members, good evening. So first off, let me start by saying what this is not. This does not create a construction project. This does not obligate funds. This does not reach into anybody's checkbook. What the purpose of establishing this underground district is, is to satisfy requirements established by the California Public Utilities Commission under what they call the Electric Rule 20, and to ensure that Brisbane thus becomes active in the program so that none of the credits, which we have accredited in the program, are taken from us. And that's the primary purpose of it. So the, as you look at the map, the way the boundaries are established, there are specific rules within 28, and so the streets that you're proposing to do your district on have to meet this criteria. A street or road or right-of-way is extensively used by the general public and carries a heavy volume of pedestrian or vehicular traffic, or the street or road or right-of-way adjoins or passes through a public recreation area or an area of unusual scenic interest to the general public, or that the street or road or right-of-way is considered an arterial street or a major collector as defined in the Governor's Office of Playing and Research. So that's why we effectively capture the streets that are on either side of the community park and then San Bruno Avenue. And the boundaries at the endpoints of it were ground truth with a representative from Pacific Gas and Electric. So what we did was we went out there, and the reason those boundaries are in the places they are is we stopped at a point where you really could effectively underground. We didn't just randomly pick this off of Google Earth. We went out there and said, okay, yes, if you stop here, you don't have to take that next poll. And we did that very intentionally. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions from you. We did notice this to all of the affected properties. We received no inquiries on the matter. So I don't know if you want to ask questions, if you want to open the public hearing. I'm happy to go any way you want to go on this.
I have one question.
Sure.
Why wasn't visitation included in this?
Because the utilities are underground?
Oh, everything's underground?
Yes, ma'am. There's no overheads on visitation. Not in the main part of it.
Never mind.
You made me think for a moment, ma'am. No, thank you. It's good. You're keeping me on my toes.
At least you paused.
I did. What have I done?
I didn't realize the entire street was already undergrounded. But thank you.
So Randy, the, so yeah, I remember, you know, lending or loaning out the credits to San Carlos. And so, yeah, and the staff report says that they're supposed to pay that back by 2024.
Correct.
So they pay that back. So are you anticipating potentially any work that the city might now have enough to where it makes sense in 2024?
I don't really think we're going to have money until about 2030. So if you look at the entire boundary that we have right now, that's rough order of magnitude. It's a $6 to $8 million project if you were underground everything. So what I really envision is that by 2030, a council seated then is going to have the option to do a portion of it. And if you were to ask me now in 2020, I'd say I'd go after the area around the park first. It's really by far the least disruptive, and it also gets all those overhead wires out of the view corridor of people who are enjoying the park. But I won't be here in 10 years, and my opinion will not matter then. I don't know how many of the council members will be here either, and so it'll be somebody else's decision and recommendation.
Yeah, for sure. So I guess in 2024, the council at the time will decide, okay, maybe we should loan out...
Chris, I don't know that we'd loan them out. You know, sir, I don't know the answer to that because it's such a fluid situation right now. As we're doing this, and just less than a week ago, I was responding to an order of rulemaking that the CPUC is looking at completely changing the 28 program. So it's in such a state of flux, I don't know where it's going to be. So on two fronts, I'm trying to preserve the credits that we have and that we have coming to us. So on this front, I'm trying to make sure that we stay active in the district so they don't take it under the existing program. But I'm also working very strongly in responding to these rulemakings to make sure that the CPUC recognizes that some agencies like us, because we couldn't develop a program on our own, we just didn't have enough credits, we took that money and we intentionally loaned it to a neighbor agency in San Mateo County so that they could complete a program, the entire purpose of Rule 28. And we don't want to be penalized for that at some point in time, you know, even though we're small and really so much of how you get credits is based on the number of meters you have. But we don't have as many meters as a city of a million people are.
Sure.
The 10 big cities in the state do really well in this program. But we want to make sure that as our credits come along, we eventually get to use them.
Absolutely. Do you think that some of the changes in the rules are occurring because of the fires that have been caused by the overhead?
That is one of the driving forces behind it, absolutely. Yeah, they're trying to look at to tailor it so that more of the money can be shunted to those areas.
All right. Thank you, Randy.
Sir.
Any other council questions? So I'd like to open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no takers and having no slips, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing on designating Central Brisbane Underground Utility District.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 2020-18?
I'll make that motion, 2020-18. Make a motion to approve the resolution.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And that moves us to Old Business, item G, which is the 400 Kings Road Slope Stability Evaluation. And staff report, please.
Yes, ma'am. I believe that the council is fairly well informed on this matter, and I think that most, if not all, of you have been out to the site and visited for yourself. You'll recall that we received the notice of some slight unraveling that was going on. Subsequent to that, you approved a geotechnical investigation. That geotechnical investigation has been completed. It's attached to the staff report. And if you go to page 2 of the staff report, you'll see that out of that geotech investigation, six possible options for your consideration have been presented. Order of magnitude cost for those different options have been presented. And there's a final column, a notes column, that differentiates what happens from one to the other. And in general terms, what it does, as you go from the leave things the way they are to other improvements, is that we've taken measures to protect the downhill residences. And as you do different increasing in cost options, you protect the travelway from the worst-case seismic event. And then, as you go further along that, you restore the parking spaces that are there. And you'll note in the staff report that we do use the word "substandard." And the reason for that is in our current municipal code and in the California Fire Code, we require a 20-foot-wide travelway for the fire department apparatus to get through, and a parking space is considered to be eight feet wide. So neither one of those conditions existed previously, so that's why if we restore it, we're not going to be able to get 28 feet without doing some really heroic, significant movement of that mountainside. But the options that we propose in here, for the most part, will restore the condition to what it was pre-existing. So with that, I'd be happy to take questions. I'd be happy to go through any of the options for you.
So on this, we are not asking to make a decision. We're receiving the report and public input on this? Or are we, are you looking for direction on which way the council is leaning on any of these options?
So I would be happy if you just choose to receive the geotechnical report. I would also be happy if you would give me direction on which of these you would like to move forward. Because when you previously authorized $30,000, that was for the preliminary geotechnical investigation and design. So that money has already been obligated, and it would cover the design of just about all of these.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff?
Not at this time.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? I have no slips, but I see people in the audience that are looking hopeful. So are there any members of the public, if you'd like to come up? Miss Goodwin.
I hope that we can get some parking out of that. Right now, our nearest parking is like a block away, and it's just, it's a real hardship. I have knee problems, and the people next door have nowhere to park. So I'm hoping that you will consider an option that will give us some of the parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak? No?
Yep, you have a hand.
Oh, okay. Come up to the podium first so that we get you on mic.
Yes, Jason, I live right near.
There you go. You're a tall guy.
I favor parking as well, yeah. I think either the last or the second to last. The shotcrete seems to make sense to me because I think it's a big unknown, how much property you'd have to buy, could you get a reasonable price? Is it going to be in limbo for a long while? So the shotcrete, to me, would make sense to restore it, to be safe. I'm pretty much opposed to development uphill from us. I think it's going to impact the environment. I think traffic is going to be a nightmare. But if that should happen, right, the thing that I don't want to happen, there should be a nice, stable way that people are going to go up. So whether that goes forward uphill or not, the roadway there should be in good shape, is my feeling. So for the record, I'm against the uphill development, but whether that happens or not, we should have a stable thing and restore the parking to the way it was. To me, the shotcrete seems to be the straightest line since you have to be negotiating with owners of how much of their property they'd give up and how much they want for it, et cetera. Makes sense?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel like I'm sort of trying to coax the people that are here that want to speak to speak. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to push, I'm just trying to give you the opportunity.
I live right above it, so the hill is eroding. Something has to be done. I don't think the status quo, which is just to have the, I don't know what they're called...
The K-Row.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's acceptable for many reasons. Since the K-Row went in, the hill's been eroding, even in that short period of time, considerably. So if you don't do something now, it will continue to erode.
Thank you.
I have a question for Randy.
Sure, ma'am.
So the uphill properties, I'm going to give you a what-if.
Okay.
So the uphill properties, the property owners have the right to develop if they so choose, correct?
I'll let the planning director hit me if I misspeak. But presuming that you are in an area that's zoned, and you've got a legal lot and/or a certificate of record, and what you're proposing is a development that meets the standards that the city's established, then yes, you would, you would have a right to develop your private property in that case.
Okay. So if we look at each one of these options relative to the uphill properties, and say we chose the shotcrete, or say we chose the soldier pile and wood lagging walls, and then somebody in the upper areas decides they want to build and they pass all the rules and regulations to do that, what then happens to the money that we spend on this initial repair, whatever you want to call it? Am I making sense?
I think so, ma'am. So let me, let me see if I can explain it in the way I talk, to see if it makes sense when we're talking about the same thing. So I think what you're asking me is, let's suppose that a development happens uphill, and the development is such an order of magnitude that it triggers a road widening requirement that extends all the way down the access road and perhaps into this block of Kings where it's so substandard.
Correct.
Correct. So in that case, if we build, whatever project we build now would most likely have to be rebuilt in future. Because we're going to restore things to the way they were, right? Because we're just doing a repair. And a new development would come in, and they would have to build to current standards. And the current standard, as I mentioned earlier, for that roadway would be 28 feet wide.
Okay. So basically, whatever we do, if an uphill project goes ahead, gets removed, replaced... replaced, destroyed?
I think it's fair to say that whatever fix we put in now is likely to be an interim fix that will be taken out at a later date.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
No, that was it. Thank you.
Oh, I had a question then.
One sec.
Wait, do you say one?
No, I just said one sec. There were hands waving.
Oh, well, we can let the public go first. Are you okay with that? Happy to let the public?
I didn't see the hands waving, but if, if you'd like to come up and speak, you're certainly welcome to.
Steve Goodwin at 459 Kings Road. Now, the last statement that I heard from Randy is making kind of a presumptuous thought in our minds, that that development's going to happen up above. And I don't know that that's ever been approved yet. So to make a statement that it may have to be redone as a result of uphill projects, I don't think is really fair. Another statement I wanted to make is that the, the water work that's going on in Kings Road is actually degradating Beatrice even further. Those trucks are going up Beatrice all the time, and they're just tearing apart all the asphalt. So I'm not sure who's responsible for that. But it's not really a city road, correct? The city doesn't maintain it. But is the city going to repair the damage?
So for clarification, were you acknowledging that just because that's a possibility? That, I mean, we, no one's going to know what's going to happen in the future, right? Something might get developed, something might not get developed. But the purpose of what we're talking about right now is to acknowledge that that possibility exists.
It's possible that I wasn't clear enough for some members listening, ma'am, but I thought, in my mind, it was quite clear that Councilmember Cunningham and I were talking about a hypothetical situation, and what would happen under those hypothetical cases, yeah.
Right. Just to get out there that that could happen. So we acknowledge that as, you know, part of our decision-making process, that information, which I think is critical in my mind. Regardless of whether that's going to happen or not, we don't know, but it's really important to acknowledge that information as we move forward. I, I really, I really want to get into the shotcrete again. I know we've talked about this before, but I think it's really important for the public, because there is another example of a shotcrete situation that continuously gets referred to as what should be done in this scenario. And there's a history that goes along with that, and I think it's really important for staff to kind of walk us through. For us, right now, as a refresher, but also for the public, how did that wall come to be? Where were the funds for that? How much did that cost? And so on and so forth. So if you could just provide that information?
Sure, I'll take a stab at it. So that, the wall that's been referred to frequently is at the 900 block of Humboldt, and it's a unicorn wall. That is the only shotcrete retaining wall we have in the city. We do have some other soil, well, we have one other soil nail wall, but that's the only soil nail wall we have that's been shotcreated. We had a similar situation to what happened with 400 block of Kings a number of years ago. The hill started to unravel, as hills do, when they've been cut, and as nature wears on them and takes its toll on it. We put up K-Rail, we prohibited parking there for a long time. And then we had a real severe, and I'm going to blank on the years, it might have been 2010-ish. We had a very, very severe, wet rainy season, and during that rainy season, the hillside came down even more, to the point where it exposed the foundation of one of the uphill homes. And so as a result of that, we were able to go to FEMA, under the declaration that had been declared in the county, and get 75% of the cost of those funds paid for by the federal government, and something in the order of another 12% paid for by the state government. So basically, that project was 80, 85% paid for by others. And that project was significantly more, is, you know, more upwards of half a million dollars, because it was a much longer wall. So, and that's, and that's part of why we were also able to get a slightly higher standard wall in there, because we were able to convince the federal government and their adjusters that we needed it, and that they were willing to pay for it. So it worked out fine for us.
So can you go over, like, some examples of other places in Brisbane in which you have other options stated on this list in place? Just as a comparison?
Oh, sure, sure.
I know that there's one on San Bruno, but I think it would just be good so the public can visualize certain other areas in town and the solutions that remain in place there.
Sure, sure, sure. So the rock bolt and drapery, that's on Ice House Hill, the east side of Bayshore Boulevard, just before Godolupi Canyon Parkway. That was installed a few years ago. The soldier pile walls, you can find just about anywhere in town. That is by far the favorite solution. It's, it's really, in many cases, it's the simplest thing to install. And there are a number of people who seem to think that that's the, the solution that seems to fit best with kind of the rustic hillside look that the community sort of has, once you get the steel in and once you get the wood lagging in, it just kind of seems to blend in a little bit better. How do we want to do this, ma'am?
Okay, we can't have a back and forth between the audience and staff, so I think we need to let staff finish, and council to ask their questions, and then I'll reopen it back up to the public.
And so since we're moving along and doing that, so a soldier pile wall, for those people who haven't seen it, it's when you take an H-beam, or some people call it a W-beam of steel, you drill a hole in the ground, you stick the beam in the ground, you backfill it with concrete, and then you stick wood lagging between the W-beams. There's flanges in there where they fit, so that's what, that's what those look like. We haven't, well, grade to a natural slope, stable slope, we actually did a combination. If you ever walked up back, the back pathway to get to Lippman Middle School, where you're going behind the tennis courts, so they had a pretty significant failure there years ago, and we did a combination there. On that one, we actually graded that back to a natural slope and moved some of the dirt around. And then we didn't do shotcrete, but we did soil nails that were drilled into the hillside. And on, and on the very front of it, so now we've got three combinations, and on the very front of it, we also had a soldier pile and wood lagging wall. So those, those are the examples that exist.
And then on San Bruno?
On San Bruno...
Heading towards?
Which one are you talking about?
Bayshore.
That's the soldier pile.
I'm just not sure where you're at, but I believe you, there's one there, ma'am. We've got so many of them.
Heading down the hill toward San, toward Bayshore.
I'm sorry.
Before, before Joy, before Gladys.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's just a wooden post wall. It's a wooden post wall. It's a timber lagged wall. I don't think we have, we do not have K-Rail on that one, ma'am.
Okay.
I mean, K-Rail, we don't have H-beam or W-beam. I'm sorry.
Okay. So we just essentially, I mean, as one should do, find the best solution for each individual incident. And I would really like to get more information. Staff and I had this conversation already, but I think that, again, this is also really important for the public. There's an asterisk at the bottom of the staff report, page 43, and it says, "Note that these costs are preliminary, and final numbers could and likely will vary significantly. Also note that these numbers are pure construction only and exclude items such as contractors' mobilization and demobilization, traffic control, costs to acquire uphill property for the fourth option, et cetera." So I know that it's hard to say exactly what will happen, as these things kind of never, don't always turn out with what you anticipated them costing, but how much can you see these costs varying? Do you anticipate they'll likely, I mean, I'm assuming they're going to likely vary upwards, and how much of a percentage do you think we could be anticipating here?
So that, that's always the great challenge, when you have a very, very low design. So this is where at a 15% if we're lucky design, and we're hopeful to really know what our end cost is.
Yeah.
At 100% of construction, so the numbers can really vary significantly. And they vary across the board with the types of projects, too. Because, for instance, you know, quite frankly, the grading to a natural, stable slope is probably the one that will vary the most, because it will require much more topography, it will require a better understanding of the property lines, it's a lot more surveying to go on to really get those costs nailed down. Something like the soldier pile and wood lagging wall probably will vary on the lower end, maybe 30%-ish plus, because that, we have a pretty good idea of what the cost to, to bring onto a site those beams and to drill them and to put the wood beams in place. But those are numbers that people work with on a regular basis. There aren't too many surprises there.
Right.
Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
I have one question for staff. On the, the grade to a natural, stable slope, how much property would need to be anticipated to be needed to be acquired of the uphill properties?
I don't have the definitive answer to that, but I, working again at a 15% design level, I would anticipate that at least two of those up properties, we would effectively be buying the whole property, because we would most likely make them unbuildable. We would encroach enough into them that they wouldn't be buildable lots anymore.
So could that potentially require eminent domain if those property owners are not interested in selling?
The city always has the right to enter into eminent domain proceedings if they have a public need for property and they can't obtain it, yeah, by just straight negotiation.
If, if, if that were to lead to an eminent domain situation, how long does that type of process take?
Oh, I'll let city attorney answer that, ma'am.
Because I assume that that's a little bit of a process.
It's a, generally, it's a lengthy process, and those who aren't getting what they want at the table delay it, make it as long as possible to increase the pressure on a settlement amount they're looking for to a matter.
Does staff?
It literally can be years.
Does staff feel that it is a, it is a matter of, does staff feel that moving quickly to find a better solution is, is, is important to do on a short timeline? Is it a matter of safety in order to move forward with one of these options fairly quickly?
I don't think it's a matter of safety, ma'am. I don't think that any event would happen right now that would affect downhill residences. But we do regularly hear from the citizens that the loss of those parking spaces is impacting their quality of life. And so I would assume that the council would consider that fact in your decision-making.
Thank you. Sorry, your question just brought up more questions for me.
I understand that. So I think that, look, hearing what staff is saying, the, the grade to a natural, natural stable slope would not be quick, easy, or inexpensive to alleviate any of the problems that we have right now, and really would not be an attainable goal for what we hope to achieve here. And, and the shotcrete and soil nail sounds like it is a much more expensive item that we would need to look into the budgetary process on how we could reasonably cover that kind of project also.
I, I think that might create a challenge for Stuart, yes.
Okay.
For Stuart specifically? So in option three, install eight-foot-high soldier pile and wood lagging wall, not to put you on the spot, but it, it does mention restoring a portion of pre-existing parking. I know we, we kind of discussed this a little bit, but again, for the public, how many spots do you anticipate would be restored? Not holding you to a number specifically until we really get into it, but, I mean, what's your best guess?
So, well, certainly, we're going to try and restore as many of them as possible, right? We would like to get them all back, we would like to get through to five. But, but the challenge we have is this, is that when you're working at the toe of a slope, okay, this is the uphill side of the street here, and you're going to clear up some of that debris and maybe even try to make it better. But the problem is, when you're working with a hillside, the worst thing to touch and to destabilize is the toe, because that's what the rest of the weight of the hillside is holding on. So I don't know now exactly how much of that we can sort of chip away at, right? Because we've got to clear up the debris here, and then we want to make room for the H-beams and the wood lagging, and we want to get as many spaces as possible. So I'm going to, I'm going to go with three to five.
And how many places were in that, that area substandard, but how many were there prior to this failure?
Five.
Public says five if it was a failure.
And my apologies for engaging the public. I know I shouldn't.
That's okay.
But I knew that they would have the answer.
Okay. So we, we could reasonably maybe get half of those places back in some fashion if we were to go with that?
Yeah, we're going to do that.
With the item number three as our request to you. And Stuart, would you have, would we have the ability as a city to, to find the funds with that plus or minus 30% estimate on, on item, for the item B? Or would we be dipping into reserves to be able to achieve that?
At the last council meeting, I think we set aside $175,000 in capital projects out of mid-year revenues being higher than expenditures. So we would be pretty close to, if it went up the full 30% to 200,000, we would be looking for 25,000 in the budget. That's not a unreasonable amount to try and find.
And, and one thing I did want to clarify for the public on the comments was, when our public works director commented on a possible uphill project, it was because one of our council members asked a question, what would happen if there were a project? It's not that anyone has submitted a project or planning a project, or we're trying to keep anything secret. It's just that a project would trigger road changes. So I, I think that it was a reasonable question and a reasonable answer of a hypothesis, so.
Right.
Do we have any other questions for staff or discussion?
No. You guys asked all my questions, so.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Okay. So one last chance, if the public would like to make a comment, I'm happy to open it up again for public. You need to come to the podium, though. And please state your name.
Jerry Goodwin. I would be very grateful if you could restore some of the parking, and thank you for considering the third option. And the other question I had was...
Can you pull the mic down, Sharon?
Sure. If there was a development, wouldn't they have to pay for replacing the wall? Or changing it? Or...
It would depend on what the development was and what the requirements to meet the zoning for that development would be.
Right. I would just think it, it would be their fix. But anyway, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The soldier wall, would it be, in the opinion of staff, as effective and safe as the shotcrete? And, and what is soil, and what is soil nail? I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
It says protects against all anticipated events, which is what a lot of the options here also say. So I think it would be probably comparable, right? I mean, correct or wrong?
Yes, ma'am, you answered the question correctly. Thank you.
Okay.
And I think that all of these options are, are ones that are what the city needs to do to protect their citizens, and they all meet that requirement. I just wanted to say that, you know, when we drive by and see K-Rail in place, you know, you think imminent disaster and that, you know, it, it looks ugly, it, it's an eyesore, it's, nobody wants to look out at K-Rail. And for me personally, aesthetically, you know, the, the rock bolt and drapery also leaves the K-Rail in place and is, is not a pleasing aesthetic for a residential area. residential area. I'm really prone to going with the eight-foot soldier wall as a direction to investigate if that's possible, if we have an agreement on the council to do so.
Yeah. Is this our discussion?
Yeah.
Or is that a motion?
Well, I'm not making a motion. I'm, I gave my opinion and-
I know. I, I agree with your opinion.
I think that's the reasonable.
So if that was a motion, I would second that.
Okay. I would make a, a motion if you need it, or do you just want direction?
I, I think a motion would be great, ma'am, just since it's going to expense money.
Okay. It's okay that I make it. Okay. I would make a motion to research and install the eight-foot-high soldier pile wall and wood lagging wall and removing the K-rail.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you for your participation. Okay, let's get down to new business, and that is to consider approval of resolution, resolution two thousand twenty-nine nineteen, approving the first amendment to the memorandum of agreement for the Baylands, and approving an addendum to the Baylands' final environmental impact report and the Silicon Valley Clean Water Final Integrated EIR for the wastewater conveyance system and treatment plant reliability improvement project.
Busy tonight, Randy.
My apologies that you have to listen to me one more time. This, this really is going to be a team approach. So I'll take a first shot of the staff report, and what I will do as the city engineer is explain to you what's physically going to happen on the ground if you approve these two items that are before you. And if you have questions on the environmental piece of it, Lloyd Zola's here in the audience, John Swickie's next to me. If you have questions on the legality of it, the city attorney's present. And if you have overarching philosophical questions, I'm sure the city manager would love to step in and help me out. And I need all the help I can get sometimes. So we've had a stockpile operation out on the Baylands east of Tunnel Road for decades, okay? We've had various agreements and various permits with them. At one point in time, we had actually gotten to a point where we said, whoa, that is more dirt than you ever told us you were going to bring in. Stop importing, export only. We also have a situation now where you just did a hearing on your notice of preparation for a specific plan EIR. The developer on the west side of the track is getting close to having his remedial action plan, his remedial design and implementation plan put into effect. And so we've got a situation where on the east side of the tracks, we've got a bunch of dirt, and I think just a little bit of clay. I think they've still got some left over from the Central Subway project that was going on. On the west side of the track, you need a bunch of dirt, but you don't have any. And back on the east side again, you need a lot of this product that's called bay mud, which is really just a fancy way, it's not a fancy way, that's a very just colloquial way of saying, a product that has a really low hydraulic conductivity. And what it's used for, it's a clay cap, and it's what you use when you create a new Title 27 cap over a landfill. So you put that down on top of the waste, and it prevents water from percolating through and getting into the waste and creating leachate, because that's really what causes the leachate, is when water comes into trash that hasn't fully decomposed. So with this current situation, you throw all that in a barrel and take a big stick to it, and then the owner of the property comes to us and says, hey, there's a project going on in Silicon Valley where we can access a lot of bay mud. Not all of it, probably maybe a tenth, maybe twenty percent of what they need ultimately, but it's material that doesn't always come available. So they would like to bring that onsite and stockpile it on the east side of Tunnel, categorize it and characterize it, make sure it's suitable for use, and then put it in to that project when they close the landfill. So the agreement that's before you lets them bring in, I'm just going to call it one hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and seventy thousand cubic yards of bay mud. They stockpile it on the east side of the tracks, and then as a condition of that, within six months of their RAP slash RDIP being approved, they have to take two hundred thousand yards of existing soil from the stockpiles on the east side of the track and put it in place on the west side up in what's now called OUSM. It's called OU San Mateo. It used to be OU One. We used to just have one and two. Now it's OUSM. So OUSM is the piece that's closest to Schlage. It's the piece that's still being regulated by the Department of Toxic Substances Control. So that's the exchange. So they would be allowed, at its very basic level, they'd be allowed to bring in one hundred and seventy thousand cubic yards of mud, and then within six months of their RAP RDIP being approved, they, they have to put two hundred thousand yards in place according to that approved RAP and RDIP, or they have an alternative option of moving two hundred thousand yards somewhere else, but getting it off the site. So the intention, as I understood it, from the subcommittee and working with them on it, is they understand the desire of being in a condition where we ultimately take action to get both sides of this brownfield remediated, because that's what the community wants, but we also want those stockpiles to go down. So with that, I'd be happy to take questions on any of the specifics that you'd like to talk about.
Council questions. Would you like to go first, Cliff?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, so Randy, you know, you talk about the, the two hundred thousand cubic yards going from the east side to the west side, and so it would be in, I guess, the, the former designation of OU One. That go to one particular area or would it be spread out?
I don't know their exact plans. I would imagine they would put it in one area. I would think they would probably just fill it to depth to that. I'm anticipating that their RAP and RDIP is going to require a minimum three foot of cover, but the ultimate amount that they put in any one place is partially going to be predicated on what their final grades are at that location. So I, I can't ima, and, and to tie it with that, why I'm struggling with giving you an answer, is there's only so much dirt you can place at one time. You know, depending upon the type of equipment, there's only so much of a thickness that you can lay down and then compact to the desired proctor density is what we call it, the, the level of compaction that you want upon it. So they'd make multiple passes, but I, it's not like they're going to spread it over the entire site. Two hundred thousand yards doesn't get you very much coverage, to be frank.
Okay. And so moving that dirt over, is that part of the remediation action plan? And it'll be part of the preparing that, that particular site for development, or is there still other steps that need to be taken with the soil and the contamination that, that exists there before building would occur?
So putting the soil cap on would meet the requirements for the environmental remediation. I, I wouldn't immediately, there is a logic tie of connecting it to the development, but there are lots of other things that have to occur before the development happens. So you-
Of course, all the planning stuff has to-
All of the planning stuff, all of the approval stuff has to go on, yeah. But this has to occur no matter what.
Yeah, okay. But just preparing the sides and, and, you know, of course, we, we know that, that in that area, that's where some of the residential will occur.
Correct, yes.
Right. And so then that site, of course, has to be remedied to those ground floor standards for, for housing. Okay. Let's see. And then, you know, in regards to the requirements for Title 27 closure of landfill side, so this, this bay mud that would be coming in, it's, it's not to remediate the site, is there to stockpile? Eventually, it would be used to remediate the site.
Correct.
But not, not at this-
Its placement right now would just be temporary storage pending placement for remediation. Correct.
Okay. And then, you know, in the staff report, it's on page two.
Okay.
It's the third full paragraph down, and it talks about importing the bay mud. You have in, in bold type that the existing soil from the east side to the west side will further the efforts of final closure of the landfill as evaluated in the Baylands' final EIR, and is consistent with the approved general plan amendment. So if you just kind of explain a little bit more about that, please.
Sure. No, because what's, what's required in the general plan amendment and what's required in the EIR is that that entire site be remediated. And so the requirement is on the east side, it be remediated to current Title 27 standards, which is putting a final clay cap on top of it, or the functional equivalent of a clay cap. There are other things you can use as an impermeable bearer, barrier, rather. And on the west side of the track, it has to be remediated to the point that it is satisfactory for OUSM, OU One to DTSC, and OU Two, it has to be remediated to the requirements of the Regional Water Quality Control. And this gets you to that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
So I'm playing the proactive game rather than the reactive game. It'd be really nice if we could be ahead of the comments, the questions, the fears about moving dirt, what that means, how it's going to not be blowing around and bothering people with the obvious debacle out at Hunter's Point. Our citizens are going to be asking and demanding to prove that the dirt that gets brought in or moved is not radioactive or the like. So how are we addressing that to stay ahead of that ball?
Sure. It, it's twofold. One of them is completely under our control, and one of them is only partially under our control. So the import of the bay mud is completely under our control because it's being done strictly under a grading permit. So as part of the grading permit application, we're going to require the developer to submit their testing protocol to us for review. We're going to engage the same environmental firm that we've been using to assist us with the review of the RAP that's being submitted to DTSC. It's EKI Consulting Firm. It's a civil engineering and environmental firm that we've been using, and we will also engage them to do periodic QA QC. As far as for the export, we have, I'm sorry, I keep hitting that tonight. My apologies. We, we have control over the truck routes. We have control over the movement. The testing of that material is going to be pursuant to DTSC standards and protocols, because they're the ones requiring the cap, and they're the ones who are going to require what that earth material has to meet for standards.
All right.
Thank you.
And just to follow up on that, you know, at one of the workshops, I know we have UPC or your, your new designation is your company, they did state in a workshop that they would test the soil coming from the east side over to the west side for radioactivity. So I'm, I'm just assuming that that will occur, and I see a nod from the representative, so thank you.
The record will note that Mr. Kevin Colono was nodding up and down in the agreement.
Thank you for saying that into the record, Randy.
I have a question. And I'm sorry if it was somewhere in the staff report and I just missed it, or you mentioned it already and it just passed me by, but the anticipation as the project is sort of been proposed so far in, in what we know is, you know, what UPC would like to do out there, how many total cubic yards of soil is needed across the site to level and get everything graded the way it needs to be?
Early estimates, we need to move at least two million from east to west.
Okay. So it's not like there's going to be an excess of, you know, the one sixty-six and the two hundred thousand.
Oh, God, no, ma'am.
Still going to need to be way more than that. It's not like all of a sudden we're going to just say, oh, well, we have a lot of extra soil, and we're just going to leave it in place and put buildings. It'll just be unnec, I don't want things to be unnecessarily, like, I don't want more, I don't want soil more than we need, you know? I don't want, just because it's like a hassle to move it somewhere else, we can't find a place to move it. So we will need far more than those two values combined.
Absolutely correct, ma'am.
Okay. Because we cannot have extra soil out there.
So, so we've discussed this quite a bit in, in subcommittee with, with Councilmember Conway, but we talk about that there's the six months that they need to start moving the soil from the one site, the, the amount that we've allowed for extra import. Based on the timeline for the remedial action plan, the RAP, what if they don't have an approved RAP? Does that clock just keep sitting there and the dirt just keep sitting there for as long as there is not an approved RAP?
Hypothetically, yes. Because the trigger point is for the RAP RDIP to be approved.
Okay. And, and is there any other mechanism to make sure this is not an ongoing growing pile of soil if that doesn't happen?
So the stockpile operation on the east side of the track does not have import permitted at this point in time, which is why this agreement is before you and why UPC is here tonight, because they need your express permission to bring this in. So the only thing that would grow if this doesn't happen is you would have one hundred and seventy thousand cubic yards of bay mud down in the little valleys between these hills. These aren't going to create their own stockpiles. These are going to be placed down in between, you know, the existing spoil hills.
So we're not going to see any increased height on any of the piles due to this import?
That's correct, ma'am. The pile heights are, for all effective purposes, at their maximum elevation, and those elevations cannot be exceeded.
Okay. And then the bay mud that they're going to be importing and storing on site needs to basically be at the bottom of those dirt piles in eventuality to provide the cap for the landfill. Is that correct?
I hate to use the word bottom, because that kind of suggests that maybe the bottom of those existing piles are, have some relationship to existing finished grade, but what that clay needs to do is it needs to be at an elevation above the solid waste matrix such that you can have a foot of clay, you can have one to two feet of a protective layer of compacted earth material above that to protect the clay layer. So you've got, the clay layer is protecting water from going into the solid waste matrix, and then you've got this protective layer of dirt that's protecting the clay layer, and then above that, you have your development section. So where those elevations end up, I don't know yet. I don't know that they match bottom, middle, top of those stockpiles.
But, but my question is that the soil piles that are currently there have not been engineered to be supportive of any development.
Correct.
So they will need to be removed-
Absolutely.
-or pushed aside, however you want to call it, to be at the least engineered for seismic and compaction, because that has never been done on the current piles.
You're absolutely correct in that regard, sure, because one hundred percent of that site is going to have to be excavated, because it has to be removed. Now, because again, you don't have to put the clay lens layer on top of the trash, but, but you've got to have an elevation that lets you do the rest of the development above it and the rest of the Title 27 requirements. But a hundred percent of that's got to be dug up so the clay can be placed. And then, as you know, the rest of the material's got to be placed, and it's got to be certified and inspected that it's been placed to the specified compression.
Okay. And then as far as the truck route for them to bring the material in from Santa Clara, what kind of, has, has that route to bring the material in been approved or submitted as what their proposed routing for the truck?
We've talked about it. We've talked about it, but they haven't submitted it because they don't have authority to, to even obtain a grading permit, but it's anticipated to be US 101 north to the four twenty-nine A Harney off-ramp, canal stick, and then come back around Alana Beatty and come right in their front door.
The way they had traditionally been operating their soil plant?
Yes, ma'am.
And then have they talked about how they would get, we would again have the approval on any truck route to get it from, from the west, the east side to the west side. Have they come up with any ideas for- Have they come up with any ideas for that?
The initial discussion was that they would exit their property onto the portion of Tunnel Avenue that they own, and drive down towards Tunnel Avenue Bridge, go over the bridge, make a hard right turn, and then basically follow the railroad tracks up past M&amp;E and stay on their property all the way to the north end. And then, to, they would exit at Geneva Avenue and make a right-hand turn and come back around through the little Hollywood Vis Valley neighborhood, back down Tunnel Avenue to get back on their property.
Okay, so they couldn't just do that same route on their own property in reverse to take their trucks back empty?
They, no, they can't because you can only make a right-hand turn. So, when you're coming out of the M&amp;E property, like when you're coming out of the nursery, the San Bruno Mount Watch Nursery, you can only make a right-hand turn. So, you'd have to make a right and then find a place where you could flip a U-turn with trucks to get them back to their property.
And do we know what the anticipated truck traffic would be on the import, the daily truck traffic from the project?
I think we had a number upwards of 100 to 200.
So, a pretty significant amount of?
Oh, it's a significant number, absolutely, yeah, sure.
And will that import of soil be included in the EIR for their greenhouse gas emissions and those kinds of things to bring in this pre-soil? Will that be included in their EIR traffic and trip management?
So, that's actually covered in the amendment that you're doing tonight, but I'll let John and Lloyd take a shot at that.
Basically, the original, the program EIR assumed a certain amount of onsite material being moved from east to west. And those numbers, you know, as was pointed out, is a much smaller number of this increment of 200,000 yards as well below what was anticipated and analyzed in that previous EIR.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have questions.
Great.
Can you just state that one more time about the truckloads? This is a Randy question.
Oh, sorry.
Can you just say how many truckloads again you're anticipating?
Sure, it could be 100 to 200 a day.
Okay.
100 to 200 a day, yes.
100 to 200 a day, and we're only getting $190,000 in truck hauling fees for that? I mean, I feel like that's significant.
We...
Every truck is like, you know, the fee for that is just pathetic. I mean, that's just so, over how long of a time?
The truck haul fees have been in place for probably over 20 years.
Don't you think that should be like increased if they've been at the same rate for 20 years?
Well, so, let me finish.
Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry.
So, we increased them, I think, three or four different times over the years. They were originally, I believe, somewhere around seven to nine cents.
Cubic yard, correct.
Yeah. And then, we brought them up, I think, into the high twenties and then into the mid forties, and I think that's where they're at now.
Forty, I think we might be at 52 now.
52 now, okay.
Okay.
So, from where they were to where they are now is, I think, like fivefold, okay? The question, I think, that you're asking, I mean, I guess in part, you know, is, the more trucks they do a day, the shorter period of time that this will last.
Sure.
So, you know, it's one, you're gonna, if we, if it gets stretched out, you know, because, and I understand that, you know, 200 sounds like a lot of truck trips, but if it's, you know, to me, it might be better if it's just done fairly quickly. In terms of the fees, I mean, we can certainly go back and look at that again, but I do want to say that, you know, we did, we have increased them a lot over the years.
How quick is quick?
Well, and there's really, well, let me say a couple of things. One is, there's really no science to this, you know, it's a fee, okay? And it's just where you want to put the fee.
Sure.
And we, if that's a direction of the council to do that, I don't know how that impacts the approval of this tonight.
I'm just interested, though, in like how, like what's the timeframe also? Like, 100 to 200 trucks a day for what period of time?
You know, ma'am, would you mind if we asked UPC to answer your question?
Yeah, I would love to hear.
I'm speaking off of my estimation, they may have a better estimate for it.
And before you do, I just have a question. I mean, didn't the voters agree to a certain amount? I thought, I thought there was like, so is that not included in this calculation?
Yeah, this gets a little confusing. Before, they had the Brisbane soils processing business, and it was a business that charged for material to come in and for material to leave.
Right.
That business basically got shut, shut, shut down, not shut down, but shut down. And so, what we're talking about now is going back just to the truck haul fees because this is not a business activity. This is just a import-export.
There's no export.
Well, the export was on the site.
To the west side.
So, we're going to be charging them fees for moving the material from the east side to the west side also, which is on-site or within our city. But it's not a business activity in the sense of them making money on it.
Right.
So, that's why we're doing the truck haul fees.
Okay, because the...
What the voters passed...
What the voters passed was based on money, right?
Well, it was based on business activity.
Business activity, whereas we got away from...
Right.
The amount of dirt being moved.
Right.
Correct?
So, it just doesn't apply in this.
Yeah, it doesn't apply, okay, thank you.
So, again, how long, how long do we anticipate? And I would love for you to come to the mic. Okay.
Okay, good evening, council. First off, in all fairness to the staff and some of the statements earlier, the truck route is not going to go over the Tunnel Road Bridge. And the reason is, is we don't want it to impact close to the city of Brisbane. So, what we've looked at now is, we had the project of visitation valley project, which is in San Francisco. So, basically, coming out of the same entrance exit that we now use for the trucking, would come out of that exit, go down Beatty to Tunnel North, up to Blanket, and then around onto Bay Shore into Sunnydale. So, that way, it stays in San Francisco, Daly City, and then we don't go to the south. And actually, the south would be a longer route. So, that's one. And then, secondly, we're looking at six months of, you know, truck operations.
Okay. Thank you, that's really helpful. I have another question, but it's for staff.
Okay.
So, the $1,000 a day fee, is that fixed? Because that sounds like the same amount that we've charged for the library taking forever. And I just feel like $1,000 a day really isn't a big motivator. I mean, that's like a drop in the bucket, all things considering, like, that's not really getting people motivated to do anything they need to do.
Sure, so, since I was accused of being the philosophical one, I'll try to address this issue. So, we actually had a fairly robust conversation on staff level about what the fee should be. And the first thought, or the first, I guess, pushback was that, you know, that the $1,000 was maybe too high.
Too high?
Yeah, I mean, we just had, we just had a robust conversation.
Okay, okay.
And the $1,000 was basically tying it to what we do with liquidated damages on construction projects. Again, there's no science to this, per se, and so, you know, I mean, I think the, assume that everybody's acting in good faith here, that UPC wants to do this, so these fees hopefully will never come into play. But, you know, frankly, if the city council says, you know, we think we should have a slightly higher than 1,000, again, there's no science to it, it's just what you're, what you feel or comfortable. We do believe on a staff level that $1,000 a day would be motivating.
I just, I don't know. Personally, for me, I feel like, you know, our library's seven months late, so, I think, or 270 days late, actually, so I feel like it doesn't seem to be motivating for them, but...
I think these are very different sort of circumstances.
Okay, true, true, that's, that's fair. But, quick question. In the soil processing operation, there were height limits that this piles could reach. On how many occasions did UPC exceed those height limits?
Twice.
Okay. Those are my questions.
I'm good for now.
Yeah, you know, I just got one que, I guess I'll ask it now. So, you know, we talked about the, you know, UPC agreeing to test the site for radioactivity for the soil that's moving over. And Randy, you said that, okay, DTSC's got, I guess, some kind of protocol, but they don't necessarily have to play that, right? That isn't part of their, that might not be part of what they're, what they would request. And so, is it possible for the city and UPC to have an agreement that this soil would be tested to, say, your satisfaction in regards to that or in collaboration with DTSC?
Well, sir, I think, you know, UPC's vice president of land development has already indicated that he would be amenable to doing some testing, it would be above and beyond. So, I'm sure we could enter in discussions about other things that you want to test.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I would, you know, for me, I would feel, you know, that that would need to be part of the equation in, you know, that you had, you know, that you have some kind of oversight with it and we're satisfied with, you know, the, you know, how it would be tested and, you know, so, okay, good, thank you for that.
Sure, sir.
Okay. So, are there any members of, would the applicant for this, I guess it's not really an applicant, would UPC like to come up and say anything else besides the questions that we asked you?
I think council understands there's an entirely new team now with UPC, and part of that was, you know, there's a commitment to, well, first of all, I'm not saying that the past wasn't this way, but doing the right thing. And doing the right thing is making certain that we keep those piles down. And in the operation itself, once we put the, what we call the prescriptive fix, which is that clay in, we will be bringing the, we're going to have to bring the elevation down as, as I said before, and so, or as what Randy was saying, we're going to bring it down. So, there's going to be an elevation difference, and we have to bring approximately 200,000 cubic yards to the, you know, west side. And in doing so, we're also looking at keeping everything on site in the future, so part of that is to build a bridge, and that's going to be part of the RDIP. So, we actually want to keep everything on the site, keep the dust down, and also, you know, bring the piles down. So, if this can kind of help us get there, that's what we're asking for. And that includes, you know, this is really for the closure, so...
What is an RDIP for the public?
The RDIP, which is the Remedial Design Implementation Plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. So, are there any members of the public that would like to bring something to our attention?
Michelle Samm, Brisbane resident, I'm sorry I was late, I was at a other event, but I really wanted to be here for this discussion. I've thought about this a lot, just so that you're truly aware of how many truck trips we're talking about, where there'll be a total of 360,000 cubic yards of material moved at two ton truck holds, about 14 cubic yards. So, that's 25,714 truckloads with material and equal that amount without material. So, that's like, hmm, 50, almost 52,000 truck trips, just so that you're really clear on what we're talking about. And I have a couple of concerns, and one of my concerns is how they're going to get from one side to the other. And I understand that we're now going to burden San Francisco with that by going up, you know, on Beatty, up Tunnel Road, across Blanket, and down Bay Shore. Beatty Road's going to be really crowded between the trucks and the Google buses and the garbage trucks. And I foresee some real issues there that we really need to look at. That's a concern, and it really isn't fair to burden necessarily that neighborhood. And it's also, Bay Shore there is heavily trafficked as well as Blanket and that little whole intersection area. It's kind of a nightmare. So, it really, I think, needs to be taken into consideration. And then, the other thing I'm thinking about is keeping track of all of the bay mud as opposed to the dirt that's there, and how are you going to keep it separated? And will it still be bay mud after it dries out? So, I might have missed that question earlier. I kind of asked that question last night, and I kind of got some kind of slightly reassuring answer, but then I thought about it a lot last night. Dirt's dirt, and when dirt dries out, it changes, and it changes in its nature, and I don't know that it'll still be bay mud after it dries out for a couple of months. And then, the other question I had is where it's coming from? Is it coming from, I guess, Redwood City? Is it coming from Redwood City? Okay. There's been an incredible amount of, I don't know whether that bay mud is clean or not. There is a lot of pollution in San Francisco Bay, and much of it is quiescent now because it's been settled in place for a long time, but they're about to dig it up. And so, I would request that the bay mud gets tested before it's brought here. I don't know if you discussed that earlier, to make sure there's no heavy metals or pollutants or other toxic things in the mud before it comes here and potentially becomes no longer mud, but something more airborne. But, I just wanted you to, I know this is a necessary step that we're about to take. I don't know if this is the last damn source of free bay mud that there's ever going to be, but it's going to be a juggling act, and it's going to be very painful locally for both Brisbane and for Little Hollywood and San Francisco. And Beatty is going to be a nightmare. And I think that had the planning commission known this was coming, they probably would not have approved the Google bus situation because that's 100 buses a day back and forth, well, more than, yeah. So, that's 200 bus trips probably, plus 200 truck trips. That's 400 heavy-duty vehicle trips on a road that's really not designed to handle it, where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic and a lot of cross-traffic of people going back and forth at recology. And recology should be somewhat involved in these plans because it runs right through their operations as well. So, thank you for hearing my concerns. You have tough decisions to make. I know you'll do what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. Since I'm not a mud expert, and I'm curious about this, do you water the mud? Does it, is it mud no matter what for eternity? Or if it dries, does it, I mean, what's the plan? What's the mud plan?
There are multiple different ways of doing it. The applicant could probably speak best to what their current thoughts are and how to do it.
Good evening, council members. The bay mud in Situ, the moisture content varies from as low as, say, 40% and as high as oversaturated. So, when you place this, normally you have to let it actually dry out to get it to an optimal moisture content that the geotech would want, which would be somewhere around 10 to 15%. So, it has to dry out in any case. And if it does end up that it's too dry, then you simply add more water to it to get it back up to the 10 to 15%.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I was under a different impression that once bay mud dried out, its properties changed, but I could be wrong on that. Does the city engineer have any?
I think there are climatic conditions where it could get so dried out that it would be extremely difficult to restore it, but I don't think, we don't... difficult to restore it. But I don't think, we don't live in that type of climate where that would happen. It's not, we're not in the Mojave Desert. We don't have that sort of heat and sun baking it.
But in the event that it did, it would probably just get, I mean, we would, they would still need that dirt anyway, right? It would just get moved to another place on the site, right?
I would think that if they're going to go to the effort to bring this in and to identify it for future use, that they're going to appropriately care for it so that it will still meet the standards. And in particular, again, it's the hydraulic conductivity standards it has to meet. So I imagine they will care for it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm good.
Fine.
So what is the council's pleasure?
I guess we, I guess we should have, I guess you, I'm sorry. I misinterpreted what you meant. I thought it was like, aren't there any more questions? But I guess now discussion amongst ourselves.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'll start. I mean, you know, this is one of the steps that is needed, right, for the landfill closure. And bringing the mud in now as opposed to later, to me, it doesn't really matter. I like that, you know, there's an agreement that will be established to test the soil that's from the east side coming over to the west side, to satisfaction of the city and DTSC. So with that, yeah, I don't have any problems with this. You know, I did ask that question to staff about the money, you know, per day thing. But, you know, I understand the rationale for it. And so I'm okay with that amount, though, of course, if the council wants to have it be higher, you know, I'm okay with that, too.
Did you initially feel it was too low?
I did. I did. You know, that's on my questions here that I asked staff yesterday. And they gave me a good reason for that, you know, having some kind of precedent that's already established. You know, as Clay was saying, that, you know, it's hard to determine, you know, what is, you know, a negative impact, right, to the city. You know, it's one thing like with the library. We're not being able to use the library, and we have folks who, you know, that we're paying, you know, the architectural firm, the design firm, right, because this construction thing keeps going on and on. Whereas out here, you kind of don't have that. So that's why I felt that $1,000 was appropriate.
Well, it seems this project is going to be a multi-billion dollar project to get anything off the ground. And so a $350,000 or $365,000 a year penalty, if there was willful delay, doesn't seem like much. But it is something that is without a cost necessarily to the city. So we did discuss that in subcommittee. And it's one of the items that came up. We were very adamant that any product coming in was just bay mud, not other product, and that we also wanted to make sure that it was also tested coming into the site. And when other product goes to the other side, that it was adequately tested to the city's satisfaction, not just DTSC and the Water Quality Board. So I think that's something that we tried to spell out in this agreement, that we would have the final say on that, and we could do random checks. And that I believe that most of those costs of testing would be borne by the applicant. So with that, I think the subcommittee was not thrilled with this change. We don't, didn't want to see additional dirt brought in. But we understand it's part of the process that is going to need to happen to be on terms to move the project forward if that's what the applicant wants and how the remedial action plan is needed to remediate the site. So I know Clark was pretty involved in this and probably would have some insights to those subcommittee meetings. But I'll do that comment that we did work on this pretty heavily. So.
Are you happy with where it stands?
Yes. I'm as happy as I can be with moving dirt around. So, yes.
I actually just have another question.
Okay.
For that, the developer. I'd like to have more information about the bridge you briefly mentioned.
Right. If you, it would be what we call the South Bridge, which is going to be our future campus road. And it's going to traverse over the tracks. And it's going to be about, it'll be north of the Visitation Creek. And our plan is, so it's, if you look at where Ice Hill, where Ice Hill is, Ice House Hill, north of that, just about, I'd say, probably within 200 feet. If you went towards the tracks from there, it'll go over, it'll be a four-lane bridge. And the purpose for the bridge is so that we can move material with graders, with actual scrapers. And the purpose of that is it quickens the operation, and also you won't have the truck traffic outside of the site itself. So we keep everything as a mass grading operation on the site.
Because I know if Paul Blue Scout was here, he would want to know if there was going to be a, what do you call it?
Conveyor belt.
A conveyor belt.
Which would be very dangerous.
So, you know, we just, for Paul Blue Scout, we have to just talk about the conveyor belt one more time. But it sounds like the bridge is, you know, trying to get at something similar.
It's the safest. It's also probably something that Caltrain would want. And so we're going through right now to find out what type of things we have to go through. And once again, it would be part of the actual closure itself.
Right.
So that we can move that material around.
Any idea, like, how long it would take to construct something like that?
To construct it, it would probably be no more than nine months to actually do the construction of it. And then the design, really, where it's the longest is the approvals. So it's a matter, because we have to deal with the Joint Powers Board on that, and then, of course, your own approvals here in the city as well.
Is that part of your Phase One?
Yes, that would be part of our Phase One. Actually, it's even prior to that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, mentioning this, and we're talking about all the trips. I mean, this one definitely has a significant amount of truck trips. Once we really get into it, we're talking about a lot of trips. And if a lot of that's coming back and forth, you know, having some kind of bridge, it would be.
Once again, I would keep it all on site. It would be no truck traffic on Bay Shore, or, like I said earlier, nothing offsite. So everything would be on site. And we would, one of the things, even myself, when I first got here, you had this track bifurcating the site, and it's always going to be difficult. And I thought, wow, we're going to have to do truck trips and everything. And it just, I mean, the mess, the traffic. And so that's why we accelerated getting the bridge in. You know, our plan-wise is to try to get it in earlier or later.
So would that bridge be permanent? Because I mean, I would, there would be a lot of construction cost.
Yeah. No, ultimately, that would be what we're going to call our, like I said, the South Bridge is going to be called the Campus Street Bridge.
Okay.
And that's in addition to the Geneva
Thing.
Bridge thing.
Geneva.
Maybe.
Right, the Geneva Couplet Bridge, yes.
Coupling, is that what you call them?
Couplet.
Couplet, because it's two, and then you have, it's basically.
Franklin and Goff.
Directions.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thanks.
Oaken and Farrell.
Sure. Was Franklin and Goff not the one? Was it Oaken and Farrell? My bad. You know what I meant. You know what I meant.
The other one.
So. Comment or discussion?
Well, comment, discussion. So Michelle did miss a lot of our earlier conversation about, you know, the testing of the dirt and how important that's going to be for everybody in our community. And it's like, I don't think we can state that enough times. But, you know, that is, if we can keep people's fears at bay in a very tight and honest way, we win a lot, and we keep a lot of angst out of the area. The idea of the volume of materials that needs to be moved, from my perspective, I would say the faster we can get that done, the better. So, you know, when you're thinking about, obviously, there's going to be dust in the air when you're moving dirt. So is it, we spread it out over, I'm just going to pick a number for the heck of it, 12 months, and we have 12 months of airborne dust every single day? Or do we say, let's get this done in that six-month period? And yes, we've got more dust, but the event is over quicker. I'm thinking the quicker we can get that done, the better. But, you know, I go back to safety, and that's the biggest thing for me. So the safest and the quickest, the least disruption, the better. Love the idea of the bridge, so we're keeping all of that traffic on site.
That won't be for this, though.
This won't be this project. Maybe the set, maybe moving it.
Yeah.
East side, depending on.
Yeah, so.
Timing.
That's what I wanted to say.
To the west side, excuse me.
All right.
So it sounds like the
We're ready to move.
Pleasure of the council is to move forward. Do I have a motion to?
Shall I read it?
Sure, why not?
Okay. So I will make the motion to approve the resolution, approving the First Amendment to the Memorandum of the Agreement for the Baylands and approving an addendum to the Baylands Final Environmental Impact Report and the Silicon Valley Clean Water Final Integrated EIR for the Waste Water Conveyance System and Treatment Plant Reliability Improvement Project.
Good job. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. And I know that's a hard decision for all of us to make and a lot of negotiations on the part of the developer. So.
Thank you, Terry and Clark, you know, for working hard and really narrowing this down to the best that it could be.
Staff had a big part in that, too. So let's move on to staff reports, please.
Okay. I was going to say that staff's involvement in the last one was, we'll cop to only if this works out well.
Great.
We will do everything we can to make sure that it has the least amount of disruption to the, to the community.
Yeah.
Guaranteed to you. Okay, city managers' report. So the first item is the one that's on everybody's mind these days, the COVID-19 latest information. We continue to post this on our website, or we are, you know, our website. We're also blasting it out on our Friday afternoon blast. Of note, the San Mateo County now has a call center that is open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for non-medical questions regarding the COVID-19 issue. And they also have language lines for non-English speakers. We continue to post just good habits with regards to flu issues, and we'll continue to place that on our website. The second item was the Baylands Specific Plan Notice of EIR Preparation. The 30-day comment period started on February 20th of this year, and we had our notice of preparation hearing last evening here in the council chambers. And information with regards to that can be found on our website. And any comments can be sent into baylands@brisbanecalifornia or brisbaneca.org. Spring fling, Brisbane Village Helping Hands Social is Saturday, March 14th at the Sunrise Center from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. with a Barbershop Quartet. And then finally, the Open Space and Ecology Committee is hosting a Jeopardy, Climate Action Plan Jeopardy Night. And Beth Grossman, local climate reality leader, will be facilitating that evening. So anyone who's interested, please RSVP and come to that event. We will have a light dinner will be provided to participants.
I guess I missed the cornhole event.
Oh, I was there.
Oh, man.
It was fun. We were the, Michelle and I were there as the cheering section. But it got cold, so we didn't see it to the end. So I'm not sure who won, but it was a good time.
Only for the hardy.
There were people who hurt, like, they look up these type of tournaments. We had people from outside of Brisbane come specifically because they love to be a part of these.
That's wrong. We got to rewrite the rules.
And they were so good. They got them, they had their tape measure out. They were.
Were there prizes?
Yeah, it was like.
That's why, right?
There was prizes, and there was beer also. I know.
There's odds listed in Vegas, I believe, on this also.
And I'm going to give a plug for the Barbershop Quartet at the Brisbane Village Helping Hands. They are amazing. If you haven't been to one of those events, that quartet is a wonderful acapella band. They're amazing, totally amazing. So come on down.
I actually had a question about coronavirus and kind of, I think it's, it's hard to know what our approach is going to be. But, you know, so many, so many workplaces are telling their employees already that they should work from home, trying to minimize, you know, people coming into the office, you know, in the event that it gets more serious, would we anticipate that we would have reduced hours at City Hall, reduced staff? Would, you know, council meetings be postponed? You know, we have some hot-button issues coming up, which I could see a room full of 40 people. I mean, I know that there are events like Lunafest, which, you know, is a possibility of having a cancellation. We talked about that at our last subcommittee meeting. But I'm just beyond those types of events, trying to think about, like, everyday life for a city operation. Have we started to put together a plan of what we are, what we will do in response to that in terms of all of us working? I think we need to start talking about that.
So the answer is, yes, we are starting to have that conversation. We actually do have a pandemic flu plan from about 10 years ago that we're going back to and taking a fresh look. Obviously, a lot of technology has changed. But those are the kinds of questions that we're evaluating. Now, some of our operations are just not set up to work from home, police, fire, public works, maintenance people. But City Hall operations, there is a possibility that some people could work from home if we, they have the equipment to do so. But we are, we are looking at that, those issues, and looking at the things that will be kind of critical, mission-critical to keep the city operating. In terms of meetings, we'll continue to monitor that. There's a almost daily phone call that's coming out of the county manager's office to all the cities in the county to kind of coordinate on a county-wide level. So we'll continue to participate in that. And at the moment, we don't see a need to cancel meetings such as this or our planning commission or Parks and Rec or any of that. But if the situation deteriorates, that could possibly be an outcome.
So at what point would we make that choice? Would that be, you know, the CDC? Would that be, you know, the CDC recommends that gatherings of certain size be, you know, postponed? Or is it just kind of hard to say, like, what will be the thing that will cause this?
Well, we certainly look to the CDC and the, our own county health officer in terms of guidance on all these issues. So the, the answer is that we will be looking to those sources for guidance on any decisions that we make.
Yeah.
I don't know. At one point, there was, you and I were working together on, like, talking about emergency preparedness, right? And this, on a subcommittee level.
Yeah.
And, you know, so much of like our conversations really have been about earthquakes and fires. Because this is really not something that, I mean, you think is really going to happen. So is it worth it from a council perspective for us to activate that subcommittee for this purpose? Or not necessarily? I think like we, having, that, that woman came, she talked about chain of command. When things happen in an emergency, you know, the outside people start coming in. But something that could be nationwide, you know, there may not be resources that there would be for a designated area, like in an earthquake, that's just specific to one area, or a fire that's specific to one area, something is widespread across the country. You know, we may be just working with what we have here. I mean, I don't know how intense this could get, but do we think that it would make sense for the subcommittee to meet about something like this?
I think we could. I mean, I know that on, early next week, we've got a staff group getting together. We actually met today also. So why don't I roundtable it with them at, at that point? And then we can see, I think it probably would make sense in terms of just kind of communication between the staff and the, and the council, and I think that's always helpful. But let me see, I, I don't want to just have a meeting for meeting's sake, I want to be.
Sure, well, me either.
And maybe it, you know, instead of the subcommittee, it should be just, you know, maybe a workshop for the council, because people in the community are going to talk to us.
Yeah.
We should be educated on.
Well, what we could do is bring back at your next meeting, kind of a status report of where we're at.
I think that would be helpful. Yeah, you know, so commute.org was, was supposed to have a symposium on, on the 11th. And I just found out today it got canceled.
Yeah, a lot of things are getting canceled.
Right, because companies are telling their employees, you know, you shouldn't be going to these things, right? At this time. And so, yeah, you know, we're, you know, how do we, you know, deal with it? You know, how do we help our community? You know, and that was one of the things I had, I talked with John Ford, the executive director, when he told me that they were canceling it and how. And, you know, we talked about how tight-knit our community is and how folks like the Lions Club, you know, help others. You know, and talking about helping hands and, you know, driving folks who, who can't drive, like elderly folks, to a doctor's appointment. You know, if there's people who are quarantined and they can't get things like food or medicine, you know. There could be something that, what are we, I mean, there's all kinds of things that I know that, you know, you're going to be talking about with staff and, and of course, with the county. I mean, there really needs to be a really, you know, coordinated type of, of way to, to make sure that this disease doesn't get blown out of proportion.
I think also, you know, that getting out information is really important in any type of disaster or situation similar to this. And I think that, you know, we owe it to our residents. We're hearing reports, like, there are so many in San Mateo County, or there are so many cases in San Francisco. I know today they just announced two community-born, I guess, cases in San Francisco. But I think it's important that if we begin to have cases in Brisbane, that we do update people fairly regularly, that what our count is specific to Brisbane. I think, you know, we owe it to our citizens to keep them really up to date.
You're right.
So I think we should definitely start talking, like, now. Like, what is the plan going to be? What are our expectations? What sorts of resources are we even able to provide? Just so that we're ready and not scrambling.
You know, exactly right. I mean, if, you know, if people in Brisbane start to come down with the coronavirus, right, and they need to be quarantined, you know, how do we, how do we help those folks? Right, I mean, that's what we're about, right? And so, you know, having a good game plan in place, you know, not only keeps the, the community healthy, at least as healthy as we can be, but it, and it also shows that we're there for those people.
Yeah.
You know, and, and most people will get through, you know, having the virus. And so.
Just one thing to just keep in mind that I think we often kind of lose sight of, kind of from an organizational structure standpoint, is that we do, we do have a, a City of Brisbane Health Department. It's San Mateo County. We delegate our health department responsibilities to San Mateo County. So we will take the lead from them on all of these things. They really are the ones that we look to, to, to provide guidance for us. And so I just, you know, kind of just keep that in mind as we, as we move forward.
Sure.
We should want to let the people that are able to take care of these issues and these questions do their job, which is the county health system.
Yeah.
And we need to work smart, not fearfully.
Sure.
And I think that, that being smart and being safe. For most people, this is not deadly. It's for at-risk people that it can be very serious. So as long as people are aware of what's going on, they act smart, you know, and, and don't be fearful, I think is, is probably the best and most prudent way for us to move forward in a healthy and productive way. Where we're, you know, reacting as needed to situations, but not overreacting and, and instilling fear in people.
Sure.
Because, you know, life needs to go on, public works, police, fire, protection, all need to keep going on. So, and I, and I think we can work as a, as a city and with our county to make sure that happens.
Yeah, no, absolutely. You know, you know, when you hear about, you know, some of the, the quarantines that are happening, you know, or, you know, without having to test, and that is so frustrating, right? It's not having tests. And so they quarantine people, so you had this exposure, you need to be quarantined. And it could be, you know, a big chunk of nurses, or it could be, you know, a chunk of.
One person took out 10 nurses and five EMT.
Right, and, and, but you don't have, so you don't even know if those people have it, right? But because of the exposure, right? And so, you know, we know there's, there's the proper protocol to, you know, to go through the county. We just hope that they get the tools that they need to do the job as soon as possible.
Yeah.
You know, before this thing does, you know, you know, get to a point where our, our first responders aren't there helping to respond.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay. So that moves us on to mayor and council matters to consider a request to establish a wildland and city property fuel reduction ad hoc subcommittee. And do we have something from staff that, what this request is?
So the, the, we've been having conversations with, in the public works department and the fire department about a couple of different projects on, on public property. One of them is a, a project that the fire department has been doing for a number of years, but they want to try to extend it. It might ultimately end up with some city appropriation of funds to be able to do this. In part, I think this is tried to, you know, address some real concerns in the upper parts of town in terms of, of act or interface with the, the mountain and some of the vegetation up there. But there's some other places in town, obviously, that where there's concerns also. So again, trying to be proactive and, and send the right message to the community that this is something we're trying to deal with upfront before we have a, a problem. And we obviously, as we know, have had a couple of fires on the mountain in, in the past year, one just last week. So the idea was to have a council subcommittee, I think probably one, two meetings, frankly, and do it timely for this year's budget and have the, if we do have city appropriation of funds and projects identified, to have it done timely for the summer.
Okay, and has there been any council weigh-in on who would like to be on that ad hoc subcommittee?
I volunteered the moment Clay said the word "wildland fire."
Okay.
Unless you want it.
Well, I think it, as a subcommittee, we would be too.
Well, I'm definitely not going to do it because I'm maxed out, so that's where I'm at. Maxed out on subcommittees.
If you want it, Terry, I'm fine with it, but if you feel like you're loaded, okay. I will volunteer.
I like that look.
Just giving you the willful look.
Yes, no, I, I got it.
I think that would be wonderful if Cliff and Karen would take that on. So then we have countywide assignments, subcommittee reports. Does anybody?
I'll start.
Have anything?
So Karen and I met regarding the public art selection committee. We looked at a revision, actually, it says the second revision. Yeah, it's the second revision, so it's the third proposal we've seen regarding the skate park mural. And we offered additional feedback, so we'll be meeting in a couple of weeks to go over that. And then it should hit the Parks and Rec Commission in April. Is there anything you want to add to that?
Nope.
Okay. And then we had a Lunafest meeting. We're at about $20,000 in sponsorships, but we could really use some more. We've sold 52 tickets. The event will be, as of now, March 28th. And of course, you know, in the event that we need to postpone it, we will postpone it. But we will definitely have a Lunafest this year at some point. But right now, everything's go as usual, so we're still projected to have it on March 28th. And, I mean, all the discussions at the subcommittee level have been relatively the same, just airing, ironing out details for what the Lions Club is going to do, what we're going to do, who's in charge of what, just managing the money coming in and trying to secure, you know, trying to nail down the menu and all that good stuff, and try to get, you know, alcohol and food donated, ordering glasses, all that stuff. So they're really mostly just, you know, really work, they're more working sort of subcommittee meetings. But that's where we're at.
And I will just chime in that I, while my name is on there, I was not in attendance at that meeting.
Okay. Let me do it?
Yeah.
Okay, so Cliff and I had the Economic Development Subcommittee meeting yesterday, and Clay and Channel were discussing their billboards that are currently in place out at Tunnel and, what's that, Blanket?
Uh, Beatty?
Beatty, thanks. And.
No, Blanket, yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
Blanket?
Beatty, yeah, okay.
Okay, so the, those billboards have been there for a long time. So they were discussing the, the changes to those billboards. And we also met with CalSTRS representatives regarding the property where Pitney Bowes currently resides and the adjoining property, that blank piece of property, and what they might want to do with that moving forward. And also, we got an update from Mitch Bull on the Sierra Point Properties, the quarry and other bits of business news, which was all pretty positive stuff.
Can I?
Yeah.
Can I ask, when you met with CalSTRS, was that a meeting instigated by the economic subcommittee or by CalSTRS?
By CalSTRS. They are pondering their next moves relative to basically the Pitney Bowes property and the vacant lot, which is one parcel, right?
Yeah, it actually is just one parcel, just the acres, two acres behind it.
They're just looking at their options moving forward. Do they sell? Do they make it bigger? Do they change the use on it? What do they do? So that was an initial, an initial conversation about, you know, the, the potential for something happening moving forward. There was nothing concrete, no real ideas, but.
And was anything brought up by Mitch about the quarry that we should be or the community should be involved in?
Not at this point. It is still in escrow, whatever that means.
Okay.
But nothing has moved for the longest time, so.
Okay.
I don't know what that really means.
Okay, great, thank you. So then that brings us to city council meeting schedule. And right at this point, there's been really no changes from the last schedule.
The, the only update is we, we are now proposing to cancel July 16th, so you'll have July and August off.
Okay, well, we had talked about hoping for that the last meeting. That would be lovely.
We're keeping hope alive.
And then I think on the meeting schedule, we really also needed to discuss the doodle poll that was sent out for the interviews. And I had one suggestion to the group, perhaps for one of the dates, and that was to move Karen and my planning issues subcommittee from that Tuesday, the 17th, because we can schedule two people easel, more easily for a different date than we can for all four. So if that would be helpful, that might be one way to get a date.
Sure.
That, that works for the group for some of those interviews. Does that help? Would that help if we were able to make that change?
Yeah. Before you finish the scheduling, I'd like to intervene on a, a new report or updated report, because it may impact scheduling at least for one committee, commission. As I think the council knows individually now, between the last meeting and, and tonight's meeting, the city manager received a call from a council member asking whether a Brown Act violation may have occurred. The fact pattern, as we, Clay called me as city attorney. We worked out how we would address it, which I'll speak in a second. The fact pattern is this, there were two individual calls by council members with an applicant or potential applicant, depending on the timing, to a commission. That commission's OSEC, by the way. There was a, the second individual call led to a call between the two council members. So the first two calls were council member to applicant. Second call is other council member with applicant. The third call is council member to council member. That's where the Brown Act starts to be, is there an issue? But you're less than a majority, so it's not a problem. That second, that call with the two council members led to a third call with a third council member. And then you get into whether or not the content of the conversation amounts to a Brown Act violation. That's, that was the issue that was raised with, with Clay. So the way we approached it was we looked at verifying with each of the involved parties, you know, what was discussed, what happened, et cetera, to get the facts. Clay relayed those to me. I went in and, and applied the law to the facts. And what we concluded was that the third council member's involvement was, led to an unintended and truly inadvertent violation of the Brown Act, because the call was actually not about. not about votes or who would be on the commission or not. The call was about a dynamic that was taking place, and it led to a discussion of the merits of one of the applicants relative to that dynamic. So we could split hairs and say, well, that discussion didn't relate to the actual application, or we can say there may have been an inadvertent Brown Act violation. My conclusion, I also spoke to the former city attorney about it, he concurred, was that it's better to, to side on the notion that there was an inadvertent violation, just so it's public and it's addressed. We don't want any misimpressions. In a situation like this, the city has the ability to take a step to remedy the violation itself, especially when it's something inadvertent. And you, you basically need to repair potential harm and move forward. So what we would recommend, and the, the city manager also concurs, is that it only impacted the one commission. It did not actually impact the applicants to that commission. But in case there was a misperception, we think you should leave that commission process open for 30 days, reopen or leave open the application process, which we would need a motion on that 30 days and reopening the application process. That's it. A council resolution. Doing that will send a message to the community that applications are still welcome, nothing's been decided, et cetera, and should dispel any notions that anybody may have had that decisions had been made in advance. This should be very clear. First of all, we found no evidence of that, but second of all, this should be very clear that there weren't any. So that's our recommendation.
So I would like to make a motion to extend the applications for OSEC for an additional 30 days. And do we want to put a date on that of, of today's date or a more rounded number?
Yeah, because what if it falls on a weekend?
What is the current date you were scheduling interviews? Yeah, that's fine.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
April 2nd.
Do the next, the first meeting in April, April 2nd?
Okay.
New deadline?
Um, so that would be to extend all applications for Open Space and Ecology to April 2nd. All current applications will still be considered and given the interview process, and we do-
Did we come up with a date yet for, did we come up with a date yet for when we were supposed to conduct some of the interviews?
We haven't yet.
No, because nobody's, nobody's available, there's not enough people available, right?
Oh, my gosh, this always happens.
Because of all the committees and all that kind of stuff.
So we'll extend applications to the public for Open Space and Ecology through April 2nd, and then we will schedule those interviews. And we do encourage all of the members of the public with an interest in this to do apply. And with that, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Yep, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. And thank you to seeing to the remedy. As far as the other applications, we're still going to need two days. The second date will, of course, have to be after April 2nd, and we can leave that for the moment. But on your doodle poll, if Karen and I were able to be available on Tuesday, the 17th, would that give us the majority we need to schedule the meetings that we do have?
No, it looks like that only works for four of the five. What about the date of, um-
Was I available, did I say I was available the 17th? I'm pretty sure I did.
I know Karen and I said we weren't.
Yeah, it was, it was Cliff and Clark that were available.
They were, or they're not?
Oh, they were available.
I said I wasn't?
Uh-uh.
Let me check.
It is St. Patrick's Day.
Oh, I know why I did it.
[laughing]
That wasn't why.
Okay.
But it's, I can, I can make it work.
Okay.
If the 17th-
So if that would work, we could schedule, we could reschedule the Planning Subcommittee because I don't think that's mission critical-
Right.
-for that date.
Agreed.
And it'd be easier to reschedule just Karen and I for some other date, if that's possible. The only discrepancy that has is that the Planning Subcommittee meeting was scheduled to be with Dell Shembury from Mountain Watch, so we would need to reach out to him to see if there was a different date. Again, it wasn't on anything that was extremely critical, to my knowledge, but we'd want to reach out to Dell and see if we can reschedule him for another day that, that would work for us all.
So what time on 17th?
Six to nine.
Six to nine, okay.
But that would potentially be later start time for either Cliff or I. Right.
We could possibly sched, because-
We want to-
Cliff is not going to need to be involved in the planning, or excuse me, the park and rec, and you won't need to be involved in the arts.
Right.
So we'll try to figure out how that would work in scheduling with the applicants.
So one of those blocks will be the first one, and the other block will be the first one on the second day.
Or the last one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check- It can't be the last one, because we have to deliberate still.
Oh. I'll check in with the applicants to see what would work best for everyone's schedules.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that at least gives us one date that we could agree on.
Good thinking, Terry.
And then perhaps, and if we're keeping the applications open, it might be that it's going to be in the first week or two of April for the, for Open Space and Ecology applications.
Can send out more doodle poll dates after April 2nd.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just bearing in mind 14th through 16th, I will be out. Okay.
Yeah, I saw that big blank spot in your calendar.
Las Vegas. Do you think I'm thrilled?
If it doesn't make-
Oh, man.
Okay.
I might be here.
Yeah. Okay. So, written communications. We had a communication from Tom Chang on February 23rd about fire relief donations for Australia. We had Cedi Asha from Cal EPA on February 24th to request to use the community room for May 19th. And we had a letter from Congresswoman Jackie Speer on February 27th regarding, regarding the federal budget priorities. And that brings us to oral communications, number two. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on an item that was not on our agenda?
Michelle Sam, Brisbane resident. I just want to announce that San Bruno Mountain Watch is having a celebration over the next two months, celebrating the over 50 years of fighting to save San Bruno Mountain. And we have numerous events planned. They are all listed on our website. Our kickoff event is this Saturday afternoon from 3:00 to 6:00 at 47 Hills Brewery in South San Francisco, where they will be introducing the new Mission Blue Brew, so you can come hoist a toast to the mountain. And we have numerous events throughout March and April and into May. And actually, on Sunday afternoon at 5:30, we'll be having our Quarry Moonwalk for the first time in quite a few years, so we'll be meeting at the Quarry Park next to the community garden, walking all the way up Quarry Road to the Quarry Gates and all the way back again. So it's, where people are invited to join us. You can bring a well-behaved dog on a leash and come for the Quarry Moonwalk. We'll have another one in April. So there's lots of events, so please go to the Mountain Watch website and take a look and join us. We have plant sales, we have a gala on May 2nd, which I hope all of you will attend. That'll be at the Genesis Tower 1. And just come and celebrate 50 years of working to save San Bruno Mountain. It's been a cumulative effort by many, many people, far-reaching beyond Mountain Watch. So it's a celebration for all of us for what we've accomplished and our, the people before us.
And Michelle, the event that's on Saturday, do you need to RSVP or can you just show up?
Oh, you can just show up. Saturday, it's, 47 Hills is open, we'll have a table there, we have some beautiful glasses, we have a historical thing. You can, for, you can join to become a member of Mountain Watch and get a free butterfly poster. We'll be having raffles. Hmm, some good city on the dais is going to come do face painting that day for a little while. Who would that be? So you can come get a butterfly on your face, and it's just going to be a, a fun festival. There'll be music and stuff like that.
And those hours again?
From 3:00 to 6:00.
3:00 to 6:00?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right. And then Sunday Quarry Moonwalk is at 5:30. And then there are numerous activities, including a really exciting symposium on April 19th. It's a Sunday, all day, at the Mission Blue Center, basically talking about the science on San Bruno Mountain. I mean, it really is a rare treasure that we have. It's not just open space, it's a fully functioning, living habitat. And I for one appreciate the support that the City of Brisbane has given the mountain, especially with the acquisition of so many acres and the support of open space and the support of Mountain Watch's efforts to continue to work at saving our, one of our most precious resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, and I hope you have a great event. So are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to adjourn in memory of Jeff Parodi and Evkeny Allen.
All right, thanks.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.